I know you talked to Maybo a little bit about the well. Any estimates yet on what you think might be? Did he give any provide cost or anything like that? Like, do we have a notic seed?
Uh, I haven't, I haven't heard that yet. I think the first stage was, um, he wanted to make sure that we had all three tanks up and running before he would show up. And so that was essentially what we get this other tank. Reepoxie to make sure everything's good and do the final maintenance on that tank.
Who's Steve?
Huh?
Who's Steve?
Mark Maybo is our well drilling company. They installed the wells and they've done our run maintenance.
I think when we did it before on well two, it wasn't, I mean, it was, I don't know, three, three thousand, I mean, it's-
It was not that expensive.
Yeah, I'm just trying to count all parts of it so we, everybody has one.
Yeah, and I think that the last thing we had asked, he asked us, you know, how far the wells had been dropped. We said, "You did it, so you look it up."
You looked it up.
And he's got the record, so he's gonna look it up.
Are we gonna go five feet deeper?
No, 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 we're gonna drop as low as we can.
This is what was-
We dropped the electrodes in the tanks five feet.
Yeah.
Right. No, if, if we can drop that well, you know, fifty feet, we'll drop it, cut to the chase and put it at the bottom.
And what was the limitation on how far we can go, is it-
There's a screen at the top. And we just, the problem is over time, we don't know where it's at, because they didn't keep good records. We didn't where it was set when it was put in the ground twenty years ago. We don't know if it's moved since then. It hasn't moved under, under my watch, but I don't know. So part of it's, you know, he's gonna-
The obvious question, why is you don't, why don't you ever set it as low as you can while it's a balance of pressure and energy, right? You know, the lower you set-
Yeah, it takes more pressure to get the thing up higher.
We don't have a choice, we-
And, and the water's technically, it's, it's a little bit cleaner the higher up you are. Because the sediment, you're getting closer to sediments. There's still a bar screen, you're not, it's not gonna let you-
You can't get all the way to bottom, but yeah.
But it's just a technical thing.
As water comes in through the aquifer and rushes down, then it's, the sediment's got more time to fall.
In, in the last week, the wells ran an average of four hours a day. Down from the twenty hours a day they were running in August. So now four hours a day, you know, that basically means we can go a couple of days with the wells off. And which is what we're doing. And by the way, just real quick, um, the main thing we're doing right now is the steel tank, the bolted one that we put on, that we put together. This is first year of operation, so it's cycled through a whole year. This is our first summer, and it's been cycled out for a whole year. So now what we do is after the year, because it was originally, you know, it was a tank, it was taken apart. We reassembled it, made all, everything new, gas gets new, the bolts new, everything's new, and reassembled it. So now that it's run through a year, now we kind of go in and reepoxie again, just, you know-
The ground settle, lid settle.
Yeah, so now it's like the final, we had very little leakage, other than just a little bit of leak at the bottom. Basically, so that's, it's very normal what we're doing. And we won't do it again.
So Maybo probably won't be in it before the next meeting?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Because even if he could, he wouldn't want to go out there now in the mud.
Okay, yeah, so-
It's a big rig, so he's gotta bring it out in the back there.
I know we look, I know it's hard to pin down because we don't know how much labor, but if we can get kind of a total.
Okay, I'll do that. Okay, um, all right, next up, uh, number five, consideration of the candidate form and electioneering. So this is an ordinance that we talked about last time. And the, uh, what we discussed was, again, the main objective was to try and lock down all parameters to make sure that everybody, you know, going in the day you sign up, these are, this is what you're, you're looking at. Either say yes or either say no, but you're not gonna gain anything. The one thing that I had put in there, we discussed kind of what do we do if you can't agree on the date? And just, to the stream of consciousness came up with this idea. So now I put it in there that if you can't agree on the date, then we just lock it in. That, um, seats one and two, you get the last Saturday in March. And then you can read it, you know, then it's the next Saturday, the next Saturday. Because, uh, early voting is, the calendar switches around based on the seventh Tuesday after the full moon and all the usual rhythm and all. But usually it's, it's in the twenties. Early voting is April twenty something. So there's no way the first two Saturdays are gonna be during early voting. So we should be bulletproof with that. The March tenth deadline, because Quinn asked me this, was because I wanna put it in the March fifteenth mayor's letter. So it has nothing to do with the election dates, it's just so I have time to put it in the mayor's letter. And, and lock it down, so everybody will know. Anyway, that's kind of what we had discussed before. And, uh, so, does anybody have any questions?
That paragraph's the only change from before.
I'm pretty sure that, I'm pretty sure that was the only thing that I changed. The only other thing I don't remember if it was in this one or the last one was, I think it might be on the next page. That Latin number four, I don't really remember if that was there before or not, there would only be ninety minutes. I don't remember whether I added that, whether that was, I wanted to lock the time down. So you're committed, it's ninety minutes and that's it, and they all walk away. Ninety minutes seems to be about right.
And we'll use the correct sentence for it. We'll use the correct sentence for it. Get to our-
Okay, anyway, I didn't remember whether that was in there before or not. I think it was, but, okay. Any questions? That was the only change I had.
All right.
I'm not making a question.
Okay, I'll, I'll motion to approve the candidate form and electioneering ordinance as permitted.
Motion second, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, very good, thank you, I think that'd be very helpful. Next up is discussion of the public services rate contract. Okay, so what we have in the packet is an email chain with Linda discussing, uh, with Allied. Linda, what do you talk about?
Um, I sent Rick this email and gave him the, the bullet points you see for the, the things that council discussed as being the, the main critical points that y'all were interested in seeing in the contract.
The first one, clear.
Yeah, and, um, so I just filled it out. And the only thing he kind of pushed back on was, uh, bullet number two, I said, uh, fix rate for the first three full years, so it would start, uh, the rate increase wouldn't happen until the start of year four. He pushed back and said that that wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to do that. So the email below, we agreed to the beginning of year three and the beginning of year five. Other than that, he has indicated that there would be issues.
Now, the nice thing that you said-
Everything is what we've asked for.
The first bullet, it, the new rate wouldn't start for a full year.
Right.
It wouldn't start, this contract tells a year to go. So we were redoing it early to try and get a better rate. They said whatever rate, no, actually won't change anything for another year. We'll get a full year ahead, so not wait, waiting three, it's actually is three years from now. It should be the first rate hike, but it'll be two years, you know, the consultant, hey, that works for me. You know, getting another year where we're at is, is good, so. The next, um, the next thing-
So the increase would be, if we're looking at it from now, it would be four years from now?
No, three, three, three years from now.
But this starts in twenty twenty, right?
Right, and it would be at the end of the second year of that, which would be twenty twenty-two.
Start of the year three, once the contract started.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. So, and I, that, that's even better, you know, having the new contract, passing the compensation, it doesn't start for a year. That works for me. So, uh, so this is kind of where we're at, and the next thing up, um, is Linda would get the actual contract. We don't have the contract yet. So now that Linda, so our, everybody understand, this is what you're gonna see next, is the contract version of this.
The terms are agreeable, now put it in writing.
Yeah, unless you've got gas pains, this is what Linda's, this is what they're gonna bring back to us. Which is, you know, the, um, the rate will change at the end of the second year, when we have a year grace period. Before, and, um, quarterly bill, the same kind of stuff.
So can, can somebody help me remember what that rate increase will be when it happens?
Uh, they're gonna, they're gonna put, they're gonna figure that out and put it in the, in the contract. It'll say like here, it's gonna be twenty dollars eleven cents.
It was, no, it was like a couple of dollars. I think back in the mouse or something.
I think it was like twenty-one dollars or something. Like, it was hard to remember because it was different things.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I get it.
But I remember in the last, the last nine years, it's gone up like three percent. They've, they've forgotten us a few times, and they haven't, we've been very fortunate. The, uh, so, you know, we'll talk about a few of these things, like I said, when the, when the contract shows up.
I can't wait to vote on the next one.
So, okay.
Does that mean that we can't renegotiate once they, once they write the contract?
Oh, yeah.
You can do whatever you want, and it's not approved until you have a vote and approve it.
Right, like right now, we can't, we don't want, we don't wanna, if this was email, wasn't, we need to see the contract.
Are you, Linda, are you referring to that once we sign the contract and renegotiate like that?
No, once you like print it out, it's, you know.
It's just, it's-
Like, I, I don't want this to, to construe as us approving it.
We're not voting on it tonight, because this is whole-
No, Linda's, Linda's pushbacks she's getting from Allied is, we're not gonna give you the twenty-page contract till you tell us what to put in it. So it's the chicken and the egg, I've been telling Linda, I want the twenty-page contract so I can read it. And so that's, so this is kind of the next step to say, put this in there-
These are the parameters that are-
And now give us the damn contract. Okay, very good. So, anyway, that's what you're gonna see coming up. All right, next up, we have a new ordinance, this is a discussion only, um, this is a comprehensive financial controls ordinance. Let me come explain what this is. So we basically have several ordinances which cover related topics. So we have a financial controls ordinance, we have an investment policy ordinance. We needed to have funds policy ordinance, which is now here. And we have a financial disclosures ordinance. So we have three ordinances already that basically do similar things, so we wanted to run it into one. Have one big ordinance that covers a comprehensive set of controls. So let me kind of give you a brief history. We have an order, the first ordinance we had was a financial controls ordinance. And it said, "The mayor can do this, the mayor can do that, it's what the mayor can't do. You can hire temporary workers." That's kind of what that first ordinance is. And, you know, you gotta have two check signers and reimbursements. And where that ordinance came from, came from the audit. Because the auditor, when we did our first audit, you know, the auditor is coming in and they have to talk about our controls. Remember, we had an embezzlement. So the auditor says, you know, okay, well, you know, of course, the person making the bank deposit isn't the one doing QuickBooks. And they're not the one that's actually taking it to the bank. You know, we have the staff of twenty, that, you know, this person does this and that. It's like, no, they're all named Linda. So, you know, we don't have the ability to segregate all the duties. So we just don't. So when I talk with the auditors, what we talked about were what are called physical controls. Since you can't do personnel controls and controls where Linda doesn't have the authority to go to the bank. Instead, this other person does, you know. Then we have to have physical controls to, to supplement that, to say, you know, everything takes two signatures. Or you can't do that, only Daryl can do that. That way, Daryl can open up a bank account, but Linda can't put any money in it. So the auditor said, "I want you to write an ordinance that covers kind of who can do what." To make sure the mayor can't write a check for a hundred thousand dollars and go out there and spend it, and then you guys are now struggling to get the money back. There's gotta be physical controls in. And that's where that first ordinance came from, it was from the auditor. It was, it was the auditor telling me, "You have to do this." So that's what that is. And it covers various things in there regarding, you know, what money I can spend in a budget, what I can't do, and, you know, can I sign a contract, can I commit the city?
So what we're gonna, what we'll do is, we're gonna, we're gonna repeal that ordinance and that becomes section one of this.
Right, so, so that's what that ordinance was about. It was about controls. So as, as we kind of scroll through this, basically, it's the same ordinance that's there. The only thing I added a section, so we start going through this, basically, the stuff is, is the same stuff that's there. There's a section I added-
I have to move it. You're always scrolling.
I know, I know, that's how I feel.
Well, hey, well, I still wanna look at it. Okay, so this is something which is new. This is something that we talked about, um, we talked about it with Andy, and we've gone around a couple of times on this. And I'm curious about the council's opinion of this. So what cities do when it comes to the, the city attorney? Some cities say, uh, there's unlimited access to the city attorney. Other cities say to, to council members, "You can't talk to the city attorney unless the city manager approves it," or, um, the mayor, or, there's a filter, because the city, if cities are in conflict, they've got, you know, you guys are telling, you're dealing with the attorney telling them that, you know, that Clint is doing crazy stuff, and you want the attorney to do this, and Clint's doing, and they have to spend fortunes because they're all tasking the attorney to go off on all of these witch hunts. And so the cities then say, "Well, timeout, we don't, we don't," because it's unlimited. You can spend an unlimited amount of money with the attorney because he just does it. And you get the bill after it's over. So some cities wanna have some controls on, you know, who can talk to the attorney. When I first got, in two thousand and six, when I had some issues with town, I talked with the attorney. They were nuts, they let the citizens go talk to the attorney. The attorney billed the town a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, I went to talk to them. It was crazy what they were doing, but, and the attorney bills were outrageous. But that, that's an example of, like, going overboard. So when I talked to Andy, this is probably a year ago, you know, we had talked about, like, what do cities do? And as you described, it kind of goes all over the place. You know, some cities, like Dallas, says, you know, it takes three of the twelve council members, you know, to agree, and then you can go and talk to the attorney about something. Other times, it gets to go through the city manager, the city manager is in charge of the town. So you, as a council member, have to have the city manager approach the attorney. And so we've never really addressed it. And so the issue that comes up, what I tried to do with this, again, this is just for discussion, was to bifurcate, kind of split it up that anybody can call the attorney on this campus. You can talk to the attorney about anything you want. But when it comes to tasking the attorney, saying, "I want you to look at this ordinance, so I want you to give me an opinion." You're now committing the town to money. I don't know how much, neither do you.
So if I call up and talk to the attorney, he's not billing me?
He is.
He gets on the phone?
He is, but I, I wouldn't wanna say, "You're not allowed," no, no. But, but I wouldn't wanna say, you know, "You're not allowed to call the attorney." You, he, if he, if you call him, he's gonna hang up the phone. I don't think that's right.
That shouldn't be, no.
You should be allowed to talk to the attorney, but talk to the attorney and saying, "Hey, this is what's going on, do you think this is okay? Or do you think this is not okay?" He's gonna say, "Yeah, no," but conversations are fine. But for you then, Daniel, I would like for you to research this and write an official opinion. Now you're tasking him to go off and do something. That's different than talking to him on the phone and saying, "I have a concern," or, "I'm curious, can we have an ordinance that does this?" Or, you know, I wouldn't wanna stifle that. So I'm, I'm trying to define between talking to the attorney and tasking the attorney. You know, the MDD ended up spending, what, three thousand six hundred dollars or something to have him write an opinion that the MDD can spend money on whatever the MDD deems to be, you know, an econo, you know, economically, all he did is repeat what the local government said. And the MDD spent three thousand six hundred dollars on that opinion.
So the, the line where you cross from just talking to tasking, is strictly just talking on the phone?
I don't know.
Or where's that line exactly?
I'm not sure, I mean, that's where, I, you know, I, the, the things I would say for sure are, I think it's, I would, let's say that I've got a crazy ordinance I want to work on, it's nuts. Going to the attorney behind everybody's back and talking to the attorney about it and getting him to do this and that, so, when you guys haven't seen it yet, that's not right. I don't think that's right. Before he gives an opinion on any kind of an ordinance or anything like that, it has to be presented here.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Because then you get, you know, if, if, you know, four people say, "This is a really bad idea."
If you're writing an ordinance or modifying it, which I'm trying to learn to do here.
Right.
And it ain't easy if you're not legal speak, uh, you don't speak that language. You know, let's say I'm writing a new, and I need to call him and ask him a question about how do I structure this? Or I'm reading something in the state code and I don't really understand it.
Right.
Can you interpret that for me? Is that tasking, or is that just-
No, I think that's, the thing that we, I don't wanna, I, I would not want to have somebody show up. I show up here tonight and say, "Here's ordinance X, Y, Z, that now, you know, you have to mow your lawn on Friday mornings at night." And everybody says, "What the hell?" I say, "No, Andy said it's okay. Andy's already approved it, Andy said it's legal, Andy's done all of this. You guys, what are you, crazy? We don't want that ordinance. And I've wasted money on one that's dead on arrival."
Two people are thinking about, one might think it's crazy and another might not, you know.
Well, that's where, to me, what I would say is, the attorney is not allowed to review an ordinance until at least it's been shown in the council, it has to be presented here. Because normally what we do is we give you feedback and say, you know.
I, I, I understand the confusion of the conversation, I think some of it is some, some experience and that maybe we need to figure out how to better word that, because Mark and I kind of talked through this. We do this with the engineers, right? And that, they show up, we talk to them, that's fine. They, they bill us, maybe they don't, or maybe it's already entered. But if we turn around and say, "Hey, we wanna task you to come up with a plan to go do a new sewer system," or go do the survey work or the geotech work for the road, they're gonna come back with a contract lined out. That's, now we're, that's billable hours. With the attorney, it's a little different, when does it turn in? It's always billable, but when you task the attorney to say, "Hey, he's gonna return something on his letterhead" and say, "This is, he's gonna sign his name to it," that, that's a little different. Reviewing an ordinance is kind of that way, but again, the whole, the whole thing is what Mark said earlier. It's not to cut anybody off, it's just to kind of put a control on this, that-
If you, if you're questioning, I think it's a good idea, any, any of us who are considering an ordinance to discuss it would better keep the first, just to get ideas and input, and it's just, you know, it's just a, a decent thing to do. You don't wanna spring something on somebody, so.
Maybe, maybe the takeaway here is we need to defer, define what the word task is versus conversation, or, you know, I have to put the, what the-
Because you're gonna be having a conversation with Andy, and you may ask him a question, and he may not know the answer at the time, and he may say, "I'm gonna have to research that for you." That could be sort of tasking him.
I, I agree, it's, so, so let me ask this, because I, you know, like, in concept, the idea of conceptually having some controls.
No, I agree with that.
Is that okay?
No, absolutely.
So, no, this doesn't-
I mean, a topic of ordinance is in general context, it depends, right?
You're gonna have to find your line.
So, uh, we just need to figure out the wording on what-
Okay, so you were gonna say so.
We're gonna figure out when it tips over to something.
Say that in my heart, oh, tips over.
Yeah, it tips over to a task versus, and, and some of that's a conversation with Andy too, to figure out, all right, Andy, what do you consider a task, and then we just define it.
That's a good point, yeah. Because I did not talk to Andy, because I want, if you're just the council, no, we want unlimited, unfettered access twenty-four seven to the attorney, that's what we want, that's fine, we just strike this and off we go. So this is the first time this has been brought up, you know.
Let's, let's work on definitions and I think that'll help.
And it, does it make any sense to consider cost when we're, versus task versus-
How is, but see, that's the MDD problem, was that, you know, they tasked Andy. See, legally, there's, if you call Andy on the phone and I say, "Andy, this is something, what do you think?" On the phone, he'll, he might say, "Yeah, yeah, I think you're probably more or less, you're probably okay," or, he'd say, "Fine." Now, if I say, "Andy, put it in writing, sign your name to it, and make it open to the public." So any other attorney cannot quote that and use it for their own city councils, that's a whole nother level.
Oh, yeah.
Of, so that becomes, that was three thousand, like, five hundred dollars for the MDD, they had no idea. When they did that, you were on the MDD, nobody said, "Hey, it's gonna be five hundred," or, "Let's task Andy to give us that opinion." And the first time that bill came in was when the bill came in.
Yeah, I wasn't on there, I'm not-
Well, you weren't on the MDD then?
Not there. You didn't know anything about that.
No, Linda, you were on the-
Just wanted to make that clear.
I mean, Linda, you were on the MDD then, I mean, if I recall right, it was just, the decision was made to get the opinion.
No, they had no idea what they-
You had no clue.
But it was, I mean, it was legit, he put them on hours researching, but-
Because it was an official-
And, and I, I tend to, if I'm gonna call him and ask him something, kind of balance between, you know, is this something I really, really need to do, and say, "Is this gonna cost me, I don't know if he'll say that, well, this research is gonna cost you a couple of grand."
It definitely doesn't, I mean, what we would do is, you know, if you talk to other people, some of the stuff you can get from T M L. T M L legal is for you. But they're not gonna give you an opinion, they're gonna steer you toward like, where in the transportation code do they come stop signs? And they'll tell you, it's one twenty-three point three. Or so, like, if you're doing, like, you know, golf, they'd be a resource if you say, "Look, I think it's telling me this. Is there anywhere else in the code where," and they'll give you, they'll tell you that. They're not gonna say, "Is this legal?" They, they always defer to your, your, your attorney.
Or you can ask them, "Am I interpreting this, or am I understanding this correctly? This is what I, what I understand."
For interpretations of the law of the thread.
Yes, I've done it where I, 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 I'll quote it, I'll say, "Here's this."
Here's this, and this is what I think.
Does this mean what I think it means?
Yes.
And, and they'll come back, you know, as I was saying. Okay, all right, and then let's, uh, let's move on, because this is a pretty long ordinance. So this needs some provision. So to me, I think we could agree that having the attorney review an ordinance prior to us passing it, you know, an ordinance for review, that's a task.
Yeah.
Reviewing a written ordinance, it's, it's an ordinance, we want him to-
Because he's gonna sign his name.
He's gonna sign his name. Okay. All right, um, rest of the stuff is clear.
So section, section two is the investment policy ordinance.
Right, so that's the same one as before that we had, so we're required to have an investment policy that pretty much covers the standard boilerplate.
I don't remember any changes in this one.
The only change in here was I, um, I made it clear for the, um, for reporting. This is again, this is something where we could put it in the, in the, in the final stage, so it's, uh, basically what this is making clear is that the, the market values, book values and all this kind of stuff, those don't apply to what we invest our money in, the money market funds, they don't have this. This would be if we bought individual bonds, if we bought individual financial instruments, so just cleaning this up. That's all it's about.
And we did that.
That's on page eleven of the ordinance. So it's just cleaning up some of the language here. So a lot of this ordinance covers fifty things you can invest in, but we've restricted ourselves to only invest in two. So the other forty-eight and all this gibberish doesn't apply, because we're not investing in those.
You want to come back to section three? You want to review changes in section four and then we'll come back to three?
Come back to section three.
So section four is the financial-
Yeah, I was thought, yeah, no, yeah, let's stay in section two.
I was moving on, because there wasn't anything else.
Okay, um, okay, so two is, yeah, pretty much that. All right, so three, three is new.
That's what I'm saying, we're gonna go to section four, address the changes that are in it, and then section three is the-
Okay, fair enough, so section four.
So section four was the financial closures, disclosures ordinance, and it's now section four.
Okay, so let me, let me again give you the brief history of this ordinance. So this is, this financial disclosures ordinance, this is the first ordinance I ever wrote. This is an ordinance from two thousand and seven, I think it was the first ordinance that we passed in two thousand and seven. And the objective of this was, if you go back to two thousand and seven, there was no audit. We had an embezzlement, and we had no money. There was no website. We didn't have a website. I got the website, and you need one to know, it's so primitive, you, it would be like stick figures now. There was no website, so there was no financial disclosure at all. Or if you came in here and asked for it, they didn't know how to run QuickBooks, they couldn't even print it. I still have the financial statements from two thousand and seven, which show, like, accounts receivable were negative. The loan that we had was on an asset, it was listed as an asset, like, we owe over a hundred eighty thousand dollars in a loan. That's an asset.
An asset.
Yeah, it was an asset. The financials were gibberish, so the first thing I did was to try and get confidence back to everybody, was to say, "Here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna post." And I'm the one that did it. Every month at the bulletin board, we're gonna post. Everything we spent money on, the balances, because there was no transparency. People knew we had had the investment, they didn't know how much money we had. So this went overboard on the disclosure, because it wasn't a website. And if you came in back then to get it from the city secretary, they'd tell you, "No." They wouldn't give you, you couldn't do an open record request, they would decline.
Previous city secretary.
Previous to Linda. So this one went over the top with a lot of disclosure, because that was what its goal was. It was to get confidence back in the city. When I wrote it, it was not clear from Andy whether or not you could actually do this ordinance. Because you'll know, in the actual ordinance- Because you'll notice, in the actual ordinance where I have this, there's no where asses, there's only one or two in the original ordinance. Because there is no section of the local government code which says you can do this. So I made it up. I used the generic, a town can do anything for the best interest of the town, was one of those things. So, so what this now is, now we have a lot of stuff on the website, so a lot of this is now obsolete. And disclosure is in different places, in different ordinances. So what this was trying to do was to make it simple with what we actually do. And to make this ordinance, get rid of this and make it much more usable as to what we're doing. Because again, remember, there was no internet. So what this does here is requires us to post a check register for the general fund, the utility fund, which is what we've always done. So most cities do, you post your check register. The check register's gonna have the date, it's gonna have the, it's gonna have all that in there. And then I usually, if you know from the mayor's letter, I put the aggregate cash balances of what we have anyway in the mayor's letter. So, you know, that's awesome, we didn't have a mayor's letter back then either. So that basically covers the, um, just posting the check register, which is what we do. And there's Form C I Q, which we never get, um, does everybody know what a C I Q is?
I'm gonna read it here.
So what the, what the state's done is, is if, if Daryl was going to, um, if we were gonna do a software contract, and you were the recipient, you were gonna do the work, and we were gonna pay you, you obviously have a conflict of interest. You would have to recuse yourself and not speak on it, you couldn't vote, obviously. But that's, the money's going to you. Now, what the state did is, they did, they did the mirror image. So suppose that we're gonna do the contract, and it's going to go to Robin to do software development. Well, you have a conflict of interest. You do, but you say, I'm not gonna file. C I Q says the vendor has to file a form if the vendor is related to somebody. And so there's a conflict of interest, so it makes both sides file. So basically, it puts the reporting on both people now. So, you know, if, if you're a company, and you're the head of, is doing it, the company has to file. So that's what they did, they doubled them. So C I Qs are just vendors saying, we're doing work for the city, and oh, by the way, one of our owners is on the city council, or is in a position of, it's not they're doing work for you. Some people misinterpret the C I Q to say, here's somebody that's doing work for the city, is also doing work for you. That's not what this is. Look, we both, the city pays coserve, so do you. The city pays our, so do you. We have a lot of the same vendors, but I'm not an owner of coserve. So that's where, the, the conflict is about ownership, it's about money, that's what C I Q is. So this is just saying.